We'll mute the mics while we're waiting. But right now, it seems like we're okay.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to declare a quorum and call the City of Groton Committee, the whole meeting from Monday, August 24, 2020, to order, Corpatrick Owens. In response to State of Connecticut Executive Order Number 7B, protection of public health and safety during COVID-19 pandemic in response to further suspension or modification of the statutes dated March 14, 2020, suspending in-person open meeting requirements. All public meetings will be closed to the public at this time. Public meetings will be available by calling 860-440-9974, or on Groton Municipal Television, Channel 2, in real time. With that, Corpatrick, please call the hall.
Present are Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Jamal Beckford, Councilor Lisa McKay, Regional Stanford, Gwenda Bierdepfo, Renova Ortiz, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, City Clerk Deborah Patrick. At the present time, Councilor Jeff Carter is excused, but I have a feeling that's him. Could somebody take you?
Okay, the first item on the agenda today is appointments. We have Marie Carmonati that is applying for planning and zoning. We have a vacancy in planning and zoning, and we reached out to her, and she has submitted a form to join planning and zoning. So Marie is on the phone in the event that you have any questions for her. Or Marie, is there anything you would like to speak to the council?
No, I'm actually very excited to have this opportunity, and it makes me feel to me like it's going to give me a voice in my community, so I was very happy to be reached out to, and I'm looking forward to it if I'm approved.
Okay, Councilor Depo?
I just wanted to comment, I was just talking to someone yesterday about vacancies on boards and commissions, and how we're always asking people, please join a board or commission, so I just want to, hopefully she can hear me, thank you very much, because, you know, it's a small commitment, but it is a time commitment, and we really appreciate it.
Well, and planning and zoning is one of the commissions that actively works because of the permits and those kind of things that we're doing, and there's a lot of work that we are doing in the city these days, so, and that's one that we're always interested in filling. Does anyone else have any questions for Marie? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, sure, I have the right time here.
September 7.
September 8.
8, right? September 7th is Labor Day.
Oh, that's right, it's Monday, that's right. Thank you.
So September 8th, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September 8th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Marie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Hopefully that was.
Thank you for working with everybody.
Hopefully that was painless.
It was, very painless.
Thanks. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, next is, we're going to do 742, which is Groton Utilities. Director Gade. The first one is data storage array.
I'm not sure if everybody remembers, but last October, we actually put forward a night just like this for just about the same amount of money. There's a data storage array that we replaced in this building, which is the very exact purchase of this. This is the second year we're purchasing the exact same thing. It's a peer storage array that matches the one that we put in this building that will be installed in the operations complex. So that's why it waives a bid requirement, because it was already chosen at that time, so this one has to match. It actually provides for backup and failovers between the two buildings, so the two drives like mirror each other. And the last set that we had lasted about 10 years.
Any questions for the director?
Is this like disaster recovery type?
Right, the servers do backups each night, and then they parallel their backups, so that if one set of data were corrupted, it would go to the other. We actually, I guess, have a system where we have about three, but these are the primary two.
Okay.
So yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9:08.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Change order number 18.
I believe we've been doing a change order just about every month. This is the 18th change order. It's for a fairly nominal amount. It does not include any PCB work. It's already been vetted by the State of Connecticut Department of Health. It actually relocates some piping support and deletes dehumidification in the facility. The facility was partially dehumidified, and the current facility does not have dehumidification, so it was determined through a process of value engineering and just practicality certain that it was not needed, so they took the deduct credit for that.
Okay, questions on change order 18? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9:08.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Walker Hill Pump Station.
As everybody knows, we have a brand-new stamp pipe tank up at Walker Hill, and the last part of that project is a part that was funded back in a bond, back in 2012. And the 2012 bond approved upgrading the pump station on the main road, on Long Hill Road, and it was determined after that was funded through a hydraulic analysis that the pump station would be better situated at the base of that tank on Walker Hill. So they delayed construction on the pump station, or upgrading that pump station until the tank was installed. And if you drive by the Walker Hill tank at this point, you will see that there is excavating already done, in waiting for a brand-new set of sidewalks and everything to be installed. All the piping with this pump station has already been installed, and the pump station was bid and will be purchased as a built-in place. It kind of comes in like a trailer, it's modular, they kind of crane it in, rob it down, and then connect all the piping, and it was the low bid.
Any questions for the Councilor Depo?
Is there a reason that on this action item, the stuff underneath isn't filled out, and usually it is, on these other action items we have?
Marie probably just printed them right out as they were emailed to her, and you can get the final copies. I think that's all, that's the only reason. Is that the sole source, or is that the bid for word? I'm not exactly sure.
It's the action item page that usually says where the money's coming from and who is authorizing that it's needed from the department?
That was just a mistake. You got an early copy.
Okay. Can you give us this information that's usually on the bottom of the piece?
Was it just signatures, or was it?
Nope, so whether it's in the approved budget, whether it's in the bond fund or a different kind of fund, who reviewed it initially on the utility commission, who approved it?
So this is coming out of the bond fund from, please, in the 2012 and 2016. It's in the resolution itself, but this was approved as part of the bond funds that we did back then, and then it was approved at the last UC meeting for the dates that were missing on the bottom.
Right, we did a utility commission meeting last week.
And then it looks like there's approvals, and they typed them in next to the general manager, the director of utilities, so I'm not sure, but that looks a little different than typed over on the line.
Okay.
So in the future, we need to make sure.
Right. I'll actually do this as they come here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the director? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9:08.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Substation multifunction test set?
This is a piece of test equipment that the test man in the electrical group has requested. It was actually budgeted in non-budget capital this year. It's a specialty piece of equipment that matches other test equipment that we have, and it will allow them to not use contractors when they're setting up certain switching devices and relay equipment in the substations and out on the lines.
Questions for the director? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9:08.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move to item 561, which is Groton Utilities financials. This is informational only.
So what we put in the packet for this month is similar to the two reports that we gave to the utility commission last week. The first one is updated June 2020, and with that, it was just updated the expenditures and through the accounts payable period, so invoices came in from prior fiscal year in July and August, so it just captured those expenses back in this report depending into a fuller picture, so we just wanted to share that with you. I don't know if you want me to look through it, there's really not a lot of changes, distant changes in expenses. I'll look through it if you want, it's up to you. And then we also included the July 2020 financials, month-to-month, again, first month, not a lot going on, allows expenditures carry over. So it's completely up to you, if you want me to go through one, the other, both.
So this is something that I started because I remember as a councillor and as a deputy mayor, I wanted to know more about the financials. I also wanted to make sure that the council gets briefed on the budget and where we are, because typically, the only time, the first time you see the budget and when it is up to you are for your review and approval. So this way, it keeps you up on what we're doing and keeps you posted. So Ron and I were talking today about what is it would the council like to see? Is this too much? Is it not enough? Would you like it in a different format? Is there a other information that you would like to have? Because this information is for you, because I get my own separate brief with data that we have. Councilor Depo?
I was just going to say, I know that it's probably repetitive, but I like that when we come here once a month, it keeps it fresh in my mind, so if I'm talking to constituents and they ask me a question, it's not been three months since I got an update or whatever, even though it's a pretty high-level overview of what's happening, it does keep it fresh in my mind, I feel like, so I like to have the updates.
Because that was something else we discussed, whether like a quarterly basis or if you want.
Monthly basis, monthly basis.
I mean, I like it month-to-month, because I like to be able to, like I said, it keeps it fresh in my mind.
Nope, and we're good, and like I said, we go back to the original reason why we put this on here was so the council would be kept up to date and know what's going on fiscally, since you are responsible for the budget, in the end. Okay, so with that, do you want to do a, go ahead and do a review?
Okay, so we'll start with the June 2020. Then, so what came up, kind of very small, the page eight, and that's the electric division, the year and date. So the total revenues for the year were, came in at 54.8 million, under budget of 55 million or 300,000 under budget, and that's the total that included on the pass route. So if we go back up to line 19, which is a total electric revenue before the industrial pass route, you'll see the budget was 47.8 million, and 47 million came in, or 754 below. You'll see the big variance there is in the commercial class, came in at 833 below budget. So that was the big driver, and then residential came in as well, and like I talked about last month, we went through these just based on less kilowatt hours being sold, that was purely the driver there. Line 41, total operating expenses, came in at 50.7 million, as opposed to the budget of 51.6 million, or 950,000 under budget. Again, the big driver there being the operating maintenance came in below budget of 644,000, along with purchased power coming in under at 734. If you had less kilowatt hours sold, the power bill will be less, so that's kind of the offset there. The total net income from operations, line 52, the budget was 3.3 million, came in just under $4 million in actual, or 685,000 above budget for the year from now, from the net income from operations. Just again, very clear.
I don't know if we're not on the right page, but your numbers aren't matching with mine.
Gotcha, correct, so let's go back.
It should be page six, not page eight. If you go to page six, that should get you on track.
All right, so let's run through that one more time.
Sorry.
So on line 19, the total electric revenue was 47 million, as opposed to the budget of 47.8, or 754,000 below budget, again driven by the commercial class of 833 below budget and the small residential 184. Line 41, total operating expenses is 50 million point seven, is the actual, opposed to budget of 51.6, or 950,000 below budget. Main drivers there, again, purchased power of 734,000, less sold, power bill's going to be less, and then operating maintenance of 644,000 came in under. So we go to line 52, the net income from operations is just under 4 million in actual, as opposed to budget of 3.3 million or 685,000 above budget. So overall, and again, there's still some things trailing, but we expect these numbers to be fairly good as far as outstanding invoices. We'll try to track them all down, get them in the system. There will be a couple other adjustments when it comes to the audit, so, but as of right now, these are fairly stable numbers.
Okay, questions on order? Okay, one?
And then this is going to be page 12. Right, are we good with page 12? Make sure I'm on the right one. So total water revenue for the year, line 17, came in at 10.7 million, as opposed to over budget of 10.6, or 150,000 over budget. Total operating expenses came in at 9.8 million, where the budget was 10.7 million, or 926, below budget. The main driver in the revenue over budget was the industrial class, and that had to do with some deduct meters going there, so that was the main driver for the revenue. And then the operation maintenance is the driver in the expenditures, so 901,000. Go to line 44, the net earnings before the DWSRF grant, came in at 840,000, where we had budget of negative 1.3 million, so two, just over 2 million below budget from the water side.
Anything on water? Okay, sewer?
Sewer's going to be page 17. The total sewer revenue, line 15, came in at 4.6 million, opposed to the budget of 3.9 million, or 732,000 above budget. Again, the driver there is the industrial, that had to do with, again, the deduct meter, and so there was no deductions for the water, so it flowed through, and it went both to the water and to the sewer with another deduct. On the expense side, the total operating expenses came in at 2.7 million, as opposed to the budget of 3 million, and that was 433,000 below budget. Line 37, the net income from operations, came in at 1.8 million, first budget of 600,000, so variance positive on budget, over budget, or under budget, rather, of 1.2. So again, the sewer had a good year compared to the lowest budget, and came in very favorable.
Questions on sewer? Councilor Depo?
I just wanted to comment, I know this is only our second year with the sewer in, or is it the first full year?
Second.
It's the second, the second full year.
Time flies, you have fun. I know it's difficult to get things, to get your budget proper, you know, the electric we've had for years, so we can kind of gauge, and we know what's, what the fluctuations are, and I know we're still getting a handle on that with sewer, so this isn't unexpected that it's, you know, over budget.
Well, and another contributor is that deduct meter.
Right.
Right, so the deduct meter from the industrial class, there were some issues with the meter, and as a result of that, we, Ron, you, Sergeant Director Gade, you and I, we briefed this to the commission, we haven't said anything to these guys yet, right? Okay, so explain, without revealing, but explain what the deduct meter does, and then the potential impact for the near future.
When we rolled out the sewer division, when we rolled out the sewer division, the way that we wrote the regulations were that if you had water usage that did not contribute to your storage, so you used the water and it didn't go to sewage, you could actually install a meter on that usage, and that meter would deduct from your sewer bill, because your sewer bill is based on your total water usage. So let's say you ran a marina, and the water that's going to the docks doesn't come back to the sewer plant, that meter would be a deduct meter on your total water usage at the marina. Certain industrial customers also have possibly something such as air conditioning, cooling towers and stuff like that, that the water does not return to the sewage plant, those are on deduct meters. Also, and potentially, those numbers could be very large, in estimate, in estimate to the total revenue that's estimated for the sewage account. So when those meters are found faulty and they're not proven and not calibratable, they fall out of the deduct category, and they default to no deduct until they can remedy the problem.
And there's also a minimum time, right? Once they've proven that we can't count on the deduct meters, there's a period of time?
We have to prove it out and make sure that it works, and revalidate the meters.
Didn't you tell me something about six months?
It depends on the customer. We really tried to do deducts live, actual, but we've entered into a couple of side agreements with customers to give them time to try to work on, make them do this work, and get them calibrated appropriately.
So my point in bringing this up is there's a potential for the next couple or three months, that you'll see an increase in revenue because the deduct meters are offline or will not be counted for a period of time, so I want to just give you guys a heads up on that. Councilor Depo?
Don't we install the deduct meters?
In this particular case, we do not. They're specialized because they're extremely large.
Okay, so there's a customer that has deduct meters that are faulty that we did not install?
That is correct.
Okay.
We do, and we have, not always, but we have installed residential deduct meters.
This.
Is that, that's accurate?
We have installed every single other deduct meter, pretty much across the board.
All right, good. Councilor Depo?
And have we, have any of those failed?
No.
Okay.
Counsel Ortiz?
These are placed in residences, or this is?
Well, this specific meter is in an industrial customer. There are customers, residential customers, that either have gardens or water their yards a lot or things like that, that have installed separate deduct meters. I was watching, looking at Facebook the other day, and noticed that Jay Dempsey down on South Prospect put a deduct meter in so that he could water his grass and not worry about the impact of the sewer bill going on. So it does happen to residents. Okay, any, anything else on sewer? Okay, that's it. All right, the next thing is going to be 748, which is donation requests. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Depo?
That was June, we didn't do July.
Okay, then let's do July. You are correct. We got a long off on that.
Sorry.
So we'll start with page five for the electric. So line 19, the total actual revenue for July was 4.3 million, as opposed to the budget of 4.1, or 175,000 over budget, mainly driven by industrial land manufacturing and residential. The line 41, total operating expenses came in at 4.8 million versus the budget of 4.7, or 89,000 above budget. Again, the main driver there is going to be your purchased power, sold more, so there was more purchased power, that was over budget of 216,000. Line 52, the net income from operations, the actual was 199,000, first budget of 88,000, or 111,000 over budget. And again, you'll see the first one, the expenditures do kind of lie coming in, so there, you see that's why the operating maintenance is a little bit below.
Questions on water? Okay, water?
Page nine. Line 17, total water revenue, the actual was 1.1, so 1.1, again, budget, just 1.1, or 20,000 to the positive or above budget for the revenue, so pretty much right on budget there. Line 30, total operating expenses, came in 817,000, opposed to budget of 938,000, or 121,000 below budget. Same thing there with the operating maintenance being the main driver for the expenses, 120,000 below budget. Line 44, the net earnings before the DWSRF grant, came in at 282,000 versus a budget of 38,000 or 244,000. And the main driver for that increase in the net earnings for DWSRF is the interconnect, not being done yet, so, but overall, it's kind of the same picture as the budget.
Questions on water? Okay, sewer?
Page 12. Lines 15, the total sewer revenue is 434,000, against the budget of 337,000, or 97,000 above budget. Line 26, the total operating expenses, came in at 201,000 versus budget of 302,000, or 102,000 below budget. Line 37, the net income from operations, came in 218,000 versus budget of 9500, so 208,000 favorable. So again, pretty much the same here, the industrial was carrying over budget from the revenue standpoint, and then the operation and maintenance is were below budget.
Okay, questions on sewer? Councilor Depo?
I know it's on here somewhere, oh, I think it's on the balance sheet, how much we have in liabilities versus what we have in our accounts for each division, that's on the balance sheet, right?
Yeah. Which is page 11 for the sewer.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions on budgets? Okay, we'll move on to 748. Donation request, first one is Thames River Heritage Park. Okay, thank you, Ron Gade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Yuhas, Thames River Heritage Park, where are we, 748? In the past, we have, they have asked for, and we have provided a $10,000 donation to the Thames River Heritage Park. We've done that historically, doesn't mean we got to do it now, but they are still not 100, in special. We've done that historically, doesn't mean we got to do it now, but they are still not a hundred, especially during the COVID year, not a hundred percent fully, fully operational based on fees. So there are Connecticut state grants that are involved, and there's also funding from various entities. They've asked for ten thousand from us, ten thousand from the town and ten thousand from New London. And somehow, this didn't get here. We, this got, we, I dropped this in my office somewhere. So that's all I wanted to bring it, bring it to you now. Ron, where would this, I'm sorry, Councilor Kate?
Do you know if the town or New London has approved?
My understanding is that they both approved, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Ron, where do we typically take this from?
This comes out of the community development fund, the two oh four, which the revenue stream there is the rental from the seismic generators each year is the main funding source of that.
Councilor Depot?
Well, where else is funding from that go?
In, in the past, the donations that we use, that's a five thousand on the standard resolution, we've used that for Summer in the City, we haven't really used it recently.
Didn't we also used to tap into that for Sierra?
For the EDC.
For the EDC person whenever part-time?
So before the EDC budget was moved into the general fund, we did have a piece of like that, one in the economic development.
But currently, EDC specialist, Sierra Patrick's full salary is brought into the general fund. We, we were using bits and pieces in order to part-time fund, and then when the Economic Development Commission asked to make that position full-time, we made the, we made the decision, Ron, I made the decision, I made the decision to bring it into the general fund. That way, you, it's always going to be there, you don't have to worry about finding money. Councilor Depot?
Well, my question is, I know usually when we donate to charity, I think all of us think of the five thousand dollars that's in the ordinance to donate. We don't usually talk about this fund, the balance and where it's going.
So we have a, we have a, we have a, okay, there's an ordinance that says five thousand dollars, you can only give, maximum, give it back to twenty percent, which is a thousand dollars per, uh, line, per charity. And that money, where's that money?
Comes out of this fund.
Okay, comes out of this fund as well.
So what this fund was set up for was community development, or, yeah, community development or economic development, it was kind of a computerification. It was the, I don't know the exact when the fund was created.
So this is different, even though it's coming out of the same fund, it is different than the other, when other charities reach out to us and ask for donations that they've done in the past. For example, with the next one we're going to do. So, but Councilor Depot, you had a comment?
I was just going to say, I, I feel like this, I, so we track the five thousand dollars and how much we spend per year, who we donate it to. We've been trying to do a better variety of charities instead of just the same ones every year that request it. I guess my question is, why are we tracking this large fund that that comes out of differently than the small fund that we donate to charity? If this is also a charitable donation account?
The reason for that is because this was a regional economic development initiative. So that's, that was what differentiated it from, from the other donations to a local charity, that. I don't know if that makes sense.
Councilor Depot?
It does make sense, I just, I would like to see an accounting of this whole account.
Okay.
Instead of.
I understand, we can do that.
So I can give you the, what I brought today was just kind of the past history of this. So it started, the, the city accepted the transfer of ownership of the boats back in two thousand and fifteen. There was, they donated three thousand from this fund in two thousand and fifteen. At that point, it went to the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, they were the one overseeing it for the Thames River Heritage Park. In two thousand and sixteen, there was a twenty thousand dollar donation, one in October of fifteen and then one in May of sixteen. Two thousand and seventeen, both the community development fund and ground utilities both did a ten thousand dollar donation each for twenty thousand. Same in two thousand and eighteen, same in two thousand and nineteen, and in two thousand and twenty, just the ground utilities did a ten thousand dollar donation. Which I'm assuming this was the last for the community development for the two thousand and twenty, but they did not.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Depot?
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Well, if anyone else has questions, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but.
Well, then we'll recognize, you had his hand up.
I, so my question is, if we donated in the past higher amounts and now we're only donating ten thousand to this group, to the Thames River Heritage Park, where is the rest of the money going?
So it's still set in this account, so there's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in this fund.
That's across.
And the revenues from generators just keep, they keep going to it, it just builds up. We don't spend it down every year.
Okay.
We use this fund more in the past, like you said, with the economic development piece of that.
Right, let me recognize Counselor Carter, because he had his hand up first. Counselor Carter, you had a comment?
It was, I guess it was more of a statement, I think that there are some councils that weren't a part of this when it got, kind of got kicked off and kicked in. And I think what Councilor Depot's, I, I think the way that it's presented, where it's, it looks as if it's a charitable organization, where it's really the part of the city was involved in, it was more of a collaborative thing and they're trying to sustain it. So I think that might be why, I can't speak for anybody, but that's the difference because of.
Okay, alright, thank you. Counselor, did you have, hold on, did you have your hand up? Are you, okay, Counselor McCabe?
So I, I kind of see this as an economic development type activity, not a charitable donation per se. So this, this account that it's coming from, is it, I mean, it sounds like we're pulling from it for different types of things, economic development versus the charitable donations. What, what is this account earmarked for in general? Like a catch-all or?
No, it was earmarked for economic development and beautification.
Okay.
And community development, so that was what it was set up.
Right, because that's where, when we, remember the economic development specialists, we've only had, let's see, Sierra's two years old, one or two, Mike was one or two before that, right? I think. One or two years, going back to Barbara, I think I was a deputy then, so I've been mayor three years. So we're going back three to five, about five years. The part-time economic development specialist was funded primarily from that account.
Okay, yeah, I, I definitely remember voting on this last year. With the ten thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry, anything else? Sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Just a very simple question, does the economic development specialist know that she has these funds to pursue projects?
Yes, but that's, yes, but it's not her expense account, she has her own budget.
Right.
Right, so we, so she does have a budget that she can pull from, if we needed to supplement that, we could, but, yeah, she's aware.
Okay.
Anyone else, Counselor Ortiz?
I'm green. So, let's say ten, 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 that's thirty. Do they, the boats, do they charge you to get on them and take you where?
They do.
Okay.
You, you can, you can do a, you can buy a card which is a season pass, you can do an individual ride, you can do daily passes, and it, the passes graduated based on whether you're a child or an adult, and I think senior.
What I'm trying to get at is, so they ask because they don't have enough for the year? I mean, when they have enough as employees and keeping up with the boats and all that?
Yeah, the, the, I'm, I'm, I'm ex-official member, ad hoc on the, on a committee. The, the maintenance of the boats is very expensive, plus the staffing, and then there's advertising and things like that that they're doing, and then they depend on the, the grant from the state, which I think, two hundred?
The chair, what is that?
I think it's either a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars a year they get from the state, and then they have other large block grants from donors, and then from the three cities, town, city and, uh, city in New London, they get ten thousand dollars from there to supplement.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's okay, go ahead, please.
Do we know how much the boats need or? I know it has to go also with the, with the, you know, with the citizens riding them, and I know because of the COVID.
Sure.
It's really bad this year, but do they have like, um, I don't know, a list or?
Would you like to see a spreadsheet?
Yes, please.
Operating expenses, is that?
I can get you, I can, well, yes, I can get you, I can get, I see his face, don't remember his name. I'll get you the, I'll get you the monthly, the monthly.
Speditures?
The report that, that he sends out.
Could you also supply us with the usage, like how many, I, I'd be interested to know how many rides they do per week, per month or however, and what the demographics, if they even track that?
I think they do, I don't know if they track it monthly, but, but, I'll reach out to Amy.
Or at the end of the season even, just so we know.
I'll go back and look at my notes and see if I have that data.
Okay.
If not, I'll reach out to Amy and get it, Amy Perry is the executive director. Counselor, actually, Counselor Carter had his hand up, Counselor Carter?
Well, I guess this is a question to the council, are we asking this in lieu of trying to approve this or is this something for the future as far as a breakdown?
That's a good question, I, I took it as you just want additional information.
Additional information.
To make you feel better.
Okay, that, that's what I was going to say, because my, 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 my statement based off what everyone else was going to say is that if the other two cities approved it, I think we need to approve it and we can kind of, for the future, get the information that you guys, you know, I mean, it's in our city, but Grand Town approved it, I mean, you know, we've, we've done this before and it kind of bit us in the butt, you know?
Yeah.
I understand, Counselor, Counselor Depot?
I just wanted to comment, I, I wasn't saying, I wasn't questioning because I, because I think that the Thames River Heritage Park is a great asset. I think that, my question is more, was more because I didn't know what, where this fund came from and what, you know, what accounting, because we get such detailed accounting of other funds and, I mean, this one we do annually in the budget, but the other thing I wanted to say is, this, the boats, they also on top of, they do charge riders, but they occasionally do events where you either ride for free or you ride for a fee to, to do extra events, which brings people to the city. So it's not just like a, like a ride across the river or whatever, it does bring people to the city and I think it's really a good asset. And I wasn't saying that we shouldn't fund it, I, I do think that we should choose our funding regardless of what other cities do, but.
I also think it's important, if you're going to donate ten thousand dollars, you need to know where your money's going. I'll get you that, that's reasonable, that's not unreasonable at all. Did, I think I might have cut you off, go ahead, Counselor Depot, anything else?
Well, I, I don't remember what else I was going to say, but.
It'll come back to you, Counselor Stanford?
Seeing that the date of this letter is in February, I think that this would have come to us prior to the season starting, so this would have been approved appropriately.
This is my fault, I dropped this.
Okay, I was just saying, okay, thank you.
Yep. This, I was prompted by an email and I said, no, I think we've already done that, and I went to Jill and said, Jill, go back and pull the resolution, she couldn't find a resolution, I said, go back and look at the document, and we pulled it up. So this, this, the reason this is late is because, I will, comes to me, I'll accept responsibility. Counselor Depot?
I remember what I was going to say. I was going to say, I think that the, I, I've written on the vote, I wrote with you on the vote, actually.
Yep.
I think that also might be great if we could have them come to a committee, the whole meeting and do a presentation, because I don't think a lot of residents know a lot about it. Like they know that there's a boat somewhere and you can ride it to New London, but I don't think they realize like that they stop at different points and that the person who is usually captaining the boat will tell you
Sure.
Things along the river, and it's, it's a nice ride, I think that would be a nice thing.
They have some Sarah's well to tell people.
Right, I think that'd be great if they could do a presentation so that the residents could see it.
Although it's toward the end of the season, but.
I mean, even next year would be, before the season.
And one of the things that I was going to do this year, but then we had the pandemic, is at some point, I'm trying to figure out how to have a meeting on the boat so, and to bring Sierra Patrick with us to ride along the waterfront, because, talking about economic development of the city of Grand, because seeing the city of Grand from the waterfront is a whole different perspective than, than what you see even riding or even if you get out and walk down on waterfront on Thames River. So, that is in my future plans to get a, there's a couple of things that I'm, I'm working through and I think I have worked through, but the COVID's one, I don't have worked through yet, so. But that's that, any other questions on this?
One last question, I guess, how many people can be on the boat in general and then with COVID?
I think it's like thirty-five normally, now I think it's, I think it's, I think they cut it seventeen. I don't, I don't remember now, let me, I can find out, but they, they are doing tours, they're, they're, got to wear masks, got to be socially distanced.
Okay.
Those kind of things, so it's, but they are still doing their tours.
Okay.
Anything else on this? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine eight.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries, children first, Grand, that's the next one. They have asked for, where am I here? They have asked for a one thousand dollar donation. We have provided them with, with funding in the past, Ron, do you have the history?
Yeah.
On that?
In two thousand, and again, this is just fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, it was a thousand dollar donation. Fiscal year two thousand and eighteen was a thousand dollar donation. Fiscal year two thousand and nineteen was a thousand dollar donation, and then in fiscal year twenty twenty, we dropped it down to four fifty and that was around the same amount that we're doing for other groups, being the Grand Mystic Falcons who did four fifty, the Grand Mystic Basketball was four fifty, Steps was five hundred and then Project that was four seventy-five, and the Grand House was one hundred.
Okay, alright, so that's the history, Counselor Depot?
So my question is, I know last year we discussed dropping some of the donations because we wanted to do more of a variety of charities. Did we use all of our five thousand dollars last year?
We did not, we used two thousand four hundred and twenty-five of it.
Yeah, we were just sure I have.
And two thousand and nineteen was forty-two hundred, two thousand and eighteen was four thousand, and two thousand and seventeen was four thousand. So just to kind of know where, it came in roughly around four thousand every year. We are, we were starting to see a lot more, we were seeing different organizations last year that were passive, but last year we did not do part on Grand Bank, that was done by ground utilities, we came up with a kind of seeing which side was doing what, so that did swing this a little bit.
Anything else? Counselor McCabe?
Just in looking at this, it sounds like the impact of COVID and the services that they're trying to provide have probably increased in this past year, so maybe it might be something that we should consider donating the full request in light of that.
Okay, Counselor Depot?
I was just going to concur, I, considering we didn't spend all of the charitable funds last year that we have allotted, I know we are trying to encourage more variety, but I, I agree.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine eight for the amount of one thousand dollars.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second, whoops, let me write this down. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Next is seven seventy-three. Next is seven seventy-three, Parks and Rec Memorial Bench for Olga, Adinovich Barton Nicky, and this is a standard request for a bench, they pay for it, and we assemble it and put it in a location. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, or, need a motion to move this to, a motion in a second to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine eight.
So moved, second.
Move a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to go, I don't, let me make sure I have it. Okay, anything else? I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes one dash two hundred and six alpha to discuss personnel matters to include the council, me, the police chief, and also running.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second, we are in executive session. There will be no business, we're going to, we're going to stay here. There will be no business coming out of executive session. Turn your mics off.
Okay, if everyone just presses the little button till it turns red, or turns off, I should say. Hold it till it turns.
But we didn't have to, what I was concerned about.